All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the school board business meeting of July 22nd. Sarah, would you please call the roll?
Aldrich?
Here.
Christensen?
McKeon?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
And Bauer?
Yes, ma'am. All right, let's begin with pledge of ladies. Join me by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I turn around, I look back, and they magically appear in uniform, almost all of you in uniform.
That's all their swag.
Yeah, that's right. Well, this is great. I think we've had you guys here before, but this is another level of accomplishment. In fact, I'm going to ask Chris, you or Suda, want to talk a little bit about, I mean, we've heard some of this before, but I think it'd be good for the benefit of everybody watching who doesn't know about the program, take a minute to recognize the Destination Imagination team for their competition at nationals.
Sure. Sure. So Destination Imagination is, it's a national, global, oh, sorry, from the universe, group. And this team here organized mass, they're seniors this year, they've been doing this since fifth grade. And Destination Imagination focuses on teamwork, creative problem solving, thinking outside the box. And what I love about this program is it's all about being a team. They're actually scored on how well they work together. So if they're building, well, break it down. So they have two central problems that they need to solve. One is a central challenge, and that they work on for the course of the year. So like this year, they're improv, and so this year, they can describe it better, I'll let them describe it. They worked on a project, solving this problem. And then when they get to competition, they present their solution. And then they also, part of their score is based on an instant challenge. So that's where they basically walk into a room, there's a table set up with materials, it might be paper cups, paper clips, mailing labels, index cards. And they read a challenge, and it's usually a task-based challenge, so it's building a tower that can hold a certain amount of weight, and there's different parameters that it needs to fit. And they have like five minutes to complete the task. And then they're scored on their solution, if it does what it was supposed to do, and then also on how well they work together as a team to solve it. So, and I'm sure I missed a bunch of stuff. But Destination Imagination, they were the first team, one of the first teams that came into a community, I brought it in, Bobby maybe helped me on this year, but it was probably 2007?
Eight. What year did you guys start?
Twenty twelve.
Twelve. Twenty twelve, oh, definitely.
Twenty twelve.
Okay. So I'm, yeah, I'm not a team member, I'm just their manager. They do all the work, and that's a great part about DI as well, is it's really supposed to be team-driven. The manager is not allowed to give them any input on their solution, they are just there to guide and to be a supervisor, and it literally has to be all of their minds working together, and the manager is not part of it at all. And Suda has been my co-manager, Suda Joshi has been my co-manager with this team since it started in Shakopee, yeah.
Yeah, so we are the team managers, but basically we have to sign an interference contract where we won't interfere, so every time, the solution will be team solution. So we are adults just supervising them, but we are not allowed to help them in any way. And since, as Chris mentioned, we are with this team when they were with graders, so over the years, we have seen them grow and develop and mature, and now, we have been to global finals three times, right? And qualified four?
Yeah.
Outstanding. And you guys, if my notes are right, you finished 14th, right?
Yes, yes.
How many teams were down there? I mean, how big was this?
It was 51, but that was our challenge and secondary level. So you look at, there's six, seven different challenges, and then there's elementary, middle, secondary, and university level. And so ours was probably one of the smaller groups, because improv is arguably one of the harder challenges. And then, so the higher you go up, the less people you have competing in it as well. So like as high schoolers, you don't find that many people, like I think we competed against four at State, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or like, or whatever, one of the ones. So you compete less, against less teams as you get older, and so like our challenge had probably one of the smaller groups. Like you look at some of them, it would be like 250 teams in like the middle level of that challenge, so.
Yeah, it was really interesting, because we, since we did start in fifth grade, to see the middle level and the secondary level, we got to notice all of the changes and how we needed to adapt to that, too. So as that pool got smaller, the teams were more and more talented, and it was a lot harder to compete then. So when we were at the finals from around the world, you're getting kind of the top-notch competitors, and here we are trying to meet the same level. And I'd say this time, it was our personal best, and I think it was one of our best performances we've ever given in all of these years, so I'm personally very proud of our work. And we got 14th overall, but with just our central, we ended up getting seventh place. We were in the top 10 for that challenge particularly.
That is phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal. Now, did somebody just say, there's collegiate level competition, too?
Yeah.
So they automatically advance to globals if they choose to.
Well, what I was going to ask is, and you're all seniors, right?
Yeah.
Wow, this team's going away, that's tough for the manager. Do you know where you're going if they have this? Is this something you're going to be able to continue, your personal?
Well, you can make a team with however many people, like it's seven people, but they could be from any different college.
Oh.
So we could continue with this team if we choose to. And I know, like, we've talked about, there's another team from Minnesota that is the university level, and they're at different colleges, and they went to global finals, and they read the challenge the night before, and then before. And so I know that's something we have talked about possibly doing, is just like meeting the night before and just go, see how it goes.
It's hard to work with collegiate by all that.
Um, it's still the same challenge, it's just, I think I have to do more research?
I think it's about the same as secondary.
I think it's the same as secondary, yeah. So as you, like, when you start, like, I think elementary had to research, like, 10 elements, and then middle level's 15, and then it goes to 20 for secondary. And I think secondary and university are pretty much the same when it comes to how much you have to put into it.
Well, what are you going to do with all your free time now, you've been doing this for years? That's phenomenal. Well, we have, as if you haven't had few days before, but we have wonderful certificates to recognize you for this level of competition, we'd like to give you. Why don't y'all stand up, actually, let's give them a hand, too, everybody.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Glad you could all do a photo?
Uh, oh, you had one, okay, good. I was going to say, our normal talk right here. Come on over here, guys.
Ashley isn't here, I'll try to fill in more, so.
I'm sure Sarah will.
I don't know. She, Ashley goes, one, two, three, and then she says, one, two, three. There we go. Thank you.
Let me take one more minute, just to recognize the sponsors who helped us get there financially.
Please, by all means.
We were so blessed to have amazing support this time around.
Global Finals is a pretty big expense, especially given that our team is only five team members this year, and they changed the way that they do their layout, and they have had a brand-new location. And so for us, that was a big deciding factor in whether or not we were able to attend the conference, whether or not we qualified. And so we're really happy to be able to honor the different sponsors that we have. And the first one that I can kick us off with is the J.C.'s from Shakopee, and they were gracious enough to donate $5,000 and a $2,000 match on top of that to cover $7,000 in our total amount, to really help us be able to get there and get the full experience and perform the way we did. Yes, we would not have been able to go without J.C.'s and their help. Also, we were supported by Seagate, Shutterfly, and Shakopee Rotary Club. So they all kind of helped us get there, we wouldn't have been able to go without them.
Oh, nice.
Congratulations, you got the thanks today.
Yes.
I don't know what I'm buying at the Renaissance this year.
Thanks, you guys. You're welcome to stay, but we know you may not. Here, I'll turn around and disappear. It's like you're up here.
Thanks, thank you.
Hey, Sarah.
Bye.
Sarah, we should probably make sure that Ash is on here for the board briefing, the list, and the board, and that kind of thing.
Absolutely.
So I heard J.C., Seagate, Rotary, and Shutterfly.
And they have given the list to be recognized by the board. I was waiting for a couple more from Jenny Ames to make that a nice complete list, but you will see that in the future. But I'll make sure she gets it, too.
Just want to make sure we recognize it.
Thank you.
Can Bob make room for it, too?
Yeah, we cleared the room. All right. Shall we continue with less fun items? We'll move to item four, consideration of agenda as presented. Do we have any changes that we are aware of? Okay, looking for a motion to accept the agenda.
Agreed.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Joe, second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes, we'll move on to consent. You have a chance to look through this. I'm looking for a motion to accept consent as presented.
I'm with you.
I heard you called second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one, one person, you know, while we bid farewell and thank everybody for their service, one of the people on our departure list is somebody who's presented the board a number of times.
Yeah.
Heidi Nussler, our assistant director of special services, is leaving, sounds like for a fantastic opportunity to get, I believe, the big job, the head director of special services within another district, so we certainly wish her well, thank her for all of her service and all the time she's put up with us, sitting at our board table and what.
Good point, Matt, and thank you for calling that out. Any other comments by anyone on the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And unless there's a reason otherwise, we'll just go in the order, put it on the agenda?
Shouldn't.
All right, so we're going to skip to item 8.1, that is the community facilities task force update. And I don't know, Judy, should I turn to you to kind of lead that?
That sounds good. We had a very interesting meeting, all the information we had asked to take a look at was provided to us, and you have the minutes here, so you kind of know what went on. But especially, we learned that we don't have a capacity problem, we have figuring out shifting where people need to go, that's the question or the challenge. One thing that I think surprised the school board members, I know it surprised me, was that the community wasn't even, or at least the people there, if they represent the community, wasn't even aware that we have a feeder program, and didn't know if that was important. I suspect if we suddenly didn't have a feeder program, we'd hear about it, but it did make me wonder, you know, what, as we consider next steps, that's something maybe to keep in mind. And so that meeting kind of dovetailed with what we had talked about at our retreat, as per, you know, the feeder program and all of that. And then I had gone to a retreat for the academies, and at the academies, we had talked about marketing, and the facilities, we talked about marketing and filling up some of our capacity in creative ways, and I found that pretty interesting. Anybody else from facilities?
Go ahead.
I think that, again, I'm very pleased with the group of people from the community that's involved in this process. I think that it's been eye-opening for them as well, especially some of them that have been in the community for a while, and understanding kind of where we've been, where we need to go. So it's been very informational. I think our next meeting, is it our next meeting is at Central, possibly?
No, I thought we were having it back here.
It's back here.
Our next one is here.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of anxious members of this committee that are looking forward to going to Central that may not have been through the facility to look at that and get a better understanding of its utilization. So, that's.
Yeah, we talked a lot about enrollment numbers and needs, and a couple things about Pearson that looks like, well, many of us were on the board last year, learned of using those same numbers and updated projections just in-house, you know, there isn't a burning need to reopen Pearson in the next five years. We also had a pretty robust conversation that a lot of people thought not opening Pearson was purely a financial move, and there was a lot more to it than that. It was easy for people to say, oh, you know, we're below fund balance, so we're just going to close the building. No, the space is actually not needed. We're in the other five, we're still below capacity in the aggregate, of course, two are above and some are below. So it was not just a financial decision. I know, Dave, you were pretty active in that conversation.
Yeah. And what was surprising to me is how much we did to communicate that, and how much that's still the narrative.
Yes.
And so, I don't know what we, I don't know what we entered to that, as to how to communicate and get that out there. Even for some people, we're sitting here showing that we had 400-plus seats that might be available to see, it still doesn't make sense, but to still hang on to that via a pure dollar thing, kind of met both criteria. So I thought that was surprising to me.
Yeah, because, I mean, it was, half the group thought, oh, it was just purely money, and boy, we could give a better quality of education if it was open. It's like, no, we couldn't, it would actually dilute the population, who's the efficiencies that come with more of a schools? And so, oh, you guys actually thought about that? Yeah.
Also, I thought it was interesting, the response to, we've had these attendance areas for a long time, and then when you start to see it almost deteriorate a little bit, it's going to happen that way, because people don't just move in uniform packs in our attendance areas. So over time, it's going to create these patterns that make those areas change. So even in a more stable district, you're still going to see some of that. And so I think that's reality, and that group really kind of as a whole, you could, they were coming to that conclusion. It was, it was really, I thought, interesting.
Well, the anecdotes, I think, especially from Red Oak and Sunpath, you know, South Bridge, and then the area of Red Oak and Sunpath, of there used to be 30 kids at the corner for bus stop, and now there's nobody, because they're all in high school, they're all driving.
Right.
And it's, oh, we're staying in our houses, this neighborhood's aging, and it was just, you know, exactly what you're saying, the trend of how a neighborhood and how an area turns over.
And so when our two largest elementaries, eight or nine years ago, are now our two smallest, it kind of demonstrates that pretty clearly as well, and it does create issues for us. And the fact that it's lasted this long is still, whoever did that work then...
Are we on year eight?
What?
This will be year nine.
This is coming, is it?
Coming, we do.
We've had it for eight.
Spring of 11.
Yeah.
Something with a five year shelf.
Typically what they last.
And I also think that they also provided the information of how far out Shakopee is built, and how much more space that there is to grow, was really eye-opening to many that help our south actually goes, there's a lot of land.
I have a question, I don't know if you know the answer to this off the top of your head. When we did this before, there's a series of meetings that are kind of informational, and you absorb a lot, and you learn a lot, to set up future discussions around recommendations. Where are you at in that process? Do you still have more information to gather and digest? Or when does the, when does the, okay, now we need to do something with it phase start? Is that September, is that?
I think it's September, I thought it was October.
It's later. You still have some...
It's not August.
Right.
It's not our next meeting, because we still have asked for information, waiting to get it back.
The next one, Mike, is that the city?
Yeah, two people. Jeff, Chris will come and talk about facilities needs, some of that audit work by UNESCO, and just sort of, you know, where the state of the buildings, if you will. And then we've invited the city folks to come and talk about just the development of the city, and what they see as growth and expansion and projections. So that's the next meeting. And then, I don't remember the sequence, but part of that information gathering is actually site visits to CFC and to Pearson. And so, we're at least, yeah, we're at least in early October, if not a little later, before then, let's start to pull all that information together and make some decisions.
That's kind of what I thought it would be. So it sounds like it's going well, good attendance, folks are able to make the meeting, or is it?
Yeah, great attendance.
I think that everybody made both meetings so far.
There's, I think there were a couple that were missing in the last one, but that's, I mean, it's been great attendance.
And the people who are there are really engaged.
Yep.
Engaged, inquisitive, asking very, very intelligent questions, and then when they're presented with information, oh, okay, they react and ask great follow-up questions. So it's been a good group.
Excellent.
Okay. Again, it's related. So at the retreat, which was July 8th, right, we were charged with coming up with a number of scenarios, kind of decoupling the elementary schools from the middle and see what we could do with that. I wonder, I'm going to tell you, having a deadline for when you might like to see three to five scenarios and maybe talk through that, when we want to do that would be good. So I'm just looking at, it's related, right, August 12th, or maybe, that might be a little aggressive, but maybe on the meeting of the 26th, that we would bring some scenarios here and say what it could look like for the middle schools, and keep those issues out there around how we handle siblings, do we roll them out, do we do this all at once, what some multi-year projections would look like. How does that sound?
Good.
Yeah, it sounds good.
The two, I think, the 26th, the 12th's a little aggressive for you guys to actually put it all together.
Yes.
And I might even say, possibly September.
So if we, how about, Sarah, and if we put some time on the calendar here recently, and so just start picking away at that, if I could, let's tentatively say the 26th, and we'll see how that work is going, and maybe we push that out maybe to the 9th.
Well, I'm thinking it through, right, our big deadline, or the big reason if we were going to make a move, we'd want to make that by January, February, make any tweaks, so that we can start to staff the buildings. So, I mean, if it's not, if September's not feasible in my mind, and if it slips into October, no, like, we've got time, we don't have to race and do it quickly, we'd rather do it well, you know, have time, a lot of breathing.
Yep, yep, we will. So we will shoot for the 26th, knowing that you're flexible on the 9th, and even more so than that, but I would say, we for sure want something by the 9th, and I'm telling you, I would want something by the 9th.
Well, because we need time to think about it, digest, pressure test it, so I think it would be good if we didn't slip, you know, too far past early September, even for the first cut.
Yep. Okay.
All right, is that good, everybody?
It's okay.
All right. Any other comments on, or for the team on facilities that task working, just wanted to leave that? Okay, please, again, thank, I'm sure you do this every time, but please thank the participants and all the hard work and preparation that goes into it as well. All right, let's move on to item 8.2. Dave, I'm turning on the floor of views, some school improvement planning process. Yeah, I'm going to talk to this for the exact 13 minutes.
I know, that's what I had, and I'm hoping to come in under.
So are we.
Okay. So for some of you, this will be kind of repeat info, I think, but this, we had a, we need a different word besides we retreat, we've all agreed on that. We had a leadership retreat, and one of the, we talked about some of our district priorities, but also then, how do we take those priorities and make them actionable, what they look like in each of the building levels? And so we had in the room, all our principals, our assistant principals, our deans, supervisors, so it was really like the leadership group down a few levels across the district to talk about how we take our priorities and start to create a system out of it. And for me, this year, as the assistant superintendent, right, and I'm evaluating and really the frontline for the principals, part of my regular check-ins with them is going to be status on their improvement plans and their efforts. Not as a this, per se, but as a what do we need to do as support to you to make sure that, whether to help you solve issues you're coming across, what do you need support from us to help make it happen? Okay, so I'm not, I'm going to blow through the slides so you get an example of what it was. I think you got one image, which was kind of the workflow on this. What we did as principals, we practiced this like what an improvement plan for me individually would be. So principals were asked about themselves, to where I'd like to be as a leader, where am I now, and let's develop a plan, how I get there, which is really the process we take when we're doing school improvement planning as well. So current reality, or what's my goal area, like in this case, current reality, what would it look like if I was great at that, and then start building how I'm going to get there? That's the general process that we're using. You guys probably, in business, I'm sure you're doing the same thing, it's goal-setting, and it can be long-term, short-term, but this was, turn and talk about it. And it's really this as well, plan, do, check, add, some kind of continuous improvement cycle, which I'm sure you're using in your business world as well. So we're doing the same thing, but we're going to document that as well. And we took this process, and we, what we've typically done is, in the past, is jumped right to the data piece of this, without recognition of some of these other things, the board priorities, state required plans, and our district strategic plans, and those core plans that we have as well, mixed with district priorities, building priorities, and data review. So really, these six things, it's almost like a needs assessment. What do I have to do, and what's kind of pushing on me from a data perspective? So through that, then, each school builds out a plan, and so where we might be looking at assessment for learning and grading as a district priority, it could look different a little bit at Sweeney than it does at Middle School East or one of our other schools, but the same common goal area is out there. And so each school kind of does their own, what's our current reality, but knowing that we're still aiming at excellence in that area, okay? This is just kind of a one-pager that each of the buildings get, that kind of explains the process in a little more detail. I'll send this, these parts. Okay, each building will get a template for their school that contains this information. So for me, when I meet with them, or when Mike wants to see, we can go jump into these and see where they're at. And they will get, I'll show you this, they'll set a number of priorities, building may have a targeted goal, and then training that might support them. So each school will have up to these five tabs that we, that contains their information for the year. The form we're using kind of for that action planning matches some of what you just saw. So, I'm going to make this a little bigger, but not, what's the goal, where are you at now, what does it look like if you're great, what's your vision, how are you going to check progress through the year, and is this a, oops, one-year, two-year, maybe even a three-year goal? So this is meant to be a very high-level look at it. For some of these steps, they might build it out in more detail, but this is the general workflow that they're going to go through. On next Monday and Wednesday, Ford and I are meeting with principals, they can pick either of those meetings, and we're doing, this is prep work, and we've done this annually as well, to help principals be ready to lead their individual building teams in this work. And Ford and I will be, we're asking them to invite us as much as possible, and we'll try to swing by each of the buildings. For those of you that have been around a while, this is a little different, we've done this the past couple of years, where we used to bring all the teams into one giant setting and have about 100 people there at once, and this is a little more flexible, and I think people have liked this. From a customer service standpoint, it was much easier for me or Ford when everybody was in the same building at the same time, but this gives them the flexibility to meet their teams and do it where they have all their resources more at hand, so.
Well, not to bet, it's a little more easy to have free-flying conversation when there's not 100 other people watching from the...
Yeah, we tried to put them all in separate rooms and whatever, but it was a little forced, but I liked it, but the principals seem to do this better. So we'll do this for a while till they think the other way is better, and then we'll switch back. So, but this is, I think that was it.
If I could, yeah, a couple things in there, you know, it's a little bit of that mantra, if you've got more than three to five priorities, you really have none. And then I think, and this probably doesn't happen, you know, in the business world, but in education, sometimes we've had, and I've seen this in multiple districts, dual sort of things going on, you go in and you spend all kinds of time with data and writing goals and doing whatever over the summer, and then sometimes I've seen in places, they get set aside until somebody goes, hey, where are those? In May, and they pull them out and they go, oh yeah, filled up, here you go.
where we used to bring all the teams into one giant setting and have about 100 people there at once. And this is a little more flexible, and I think people have liked this. From a customer service standpoint, it was much easier for me or Ford when everybody was in the same building at the same time, but this gives them the flexibility to meet their teams and do it where they have all their resources more at hand, so.
Well, not to bet, it's a little more easy to have free-falling conversation when there's not 100 other people watching from them.
Yeah, we tried to put them all in separate rooms and whatever, but it was a little forced, but I liked it. But the principals seem to do this better. So we'll do this for a while till they think the other way is better, and then we'll switch back. So, but this is, I think that was it.
If I could, yeah, a couple of things in there, you know, it's a little bit of that mantra, if you've got more than three to five priorities, you really have none. And then I think, and this probably doesn't happen, you know, in the business world, but in education, sometimes we've had, and I've seen this in multiple districts, dual sort of things going on. You go in and you spend all kinds of time with data and writing goals and doing whatever over the summer. And then sometimes I've seen in places, they get set aside until somebody goes, hey, where are those in May? And they pull them out and they go, oh yeah, filled out, here you go. Well, we wanted, we want the focus on the real work. And Dave mentioned, you know, he's building check-ins into his principal eval, but how are you doing on your goals, your real priorities, your real work that, you know, either we prioritize or work together as a district, or the buildings have their own priorities. So really want them to take a look at what's going to move their building, their situation forward the best. And so I appreciate the work, Dave, and I think I wrote about it in the rap last week. Kind of took the best, kind of the foundational stuff from the past with, you know, trying to tackle that reality of let's make sure that this is their real work and not a dual-track system. So, thank you for that.
You know, I just want to say that Ford's done a lot of work on this as well, so I give him, and Nancy's been involved as well. And so we're trying to make this really a process that recognizes these other pieces that we don't have choices on and how that merges with the things that we do. So.
Questions for Dave?
13?
You're not done yet, I have two questions. So I don't want to count this. When is the deliverable due? Since you kind of have everybody, you know, on islands, they all know it's due, is it by the, it's not by the 16th, maybe it is?
So we, you know, if somebody wanted to push it out into that next week and do that with their team, they could certainly do it. But I'd say my first check-ins would be in September sometime, so I'd want to see completed plans by then. And I think they'll all be done before then. But as far as a hard deadline, I haven't set one, and maybe we should do that.
Okay, I'm a little surprised because it just seems like it gives people something to shoot for. That's just an observation.
And, but I will say this ready, that most principals, what they'll do is that that week that we, what is it, what is it, month, 28th of August?
Yeah.
Okay. That day, usually most principals are doing something with their staff as a welcome back and sharing kind of our goals and whatever.
Right, I think they'd be done by then.
So the majority of them would be doing something with their staff around this at that time.
Is there a plan to put this all together? And I don't think, and I'm speaking for myself, you know, for the board, but I don't think we need a, you know, presentation of every school's plan, but I think it'd be good for us as a board to be able to see these and thumb through them. If we have the occasional question, you know, we can throw that back. So that's the other reason I ask is when is it going to be delivered? Because I think there could be something provided to us in just an oversight capacity so we can flip through it.
Sure.
Okay, this is what Eagle Creek's going to work on, this is what.
That's great. And when we meet, that's good feedback, when we meet with them on the 29th and the 31st, we can work through that, because we'll have every, they get to pick which one works best for them, we'll have every principal go through there.
And I'm not suggesting, I know that years ago, when I was first on the course, this predates anybody here, but you'll remember.
And I'm disappointed with what I know you're about to say.
We used to have the school presentations. And, and like I said, I'm not proposing that, but that could be a venue for, you know, us kind of figuring out at a board level, at a high level, what's going on in schools. And again, that's why I say if there's something we have consolidated that we can flip through, at least it gives us that insight.
I'd like to be here for the principal.
Oh, I'm sure you just love it.
I was just going to say before you made that comment, that I missed the school reports.
There you go.
And it would be fun to see these like we used to see them.
Well, I believe we stopped them there. That was our first few months, I believe, the Sweeney principal at the time went well over his time limit. And, oh, hey Dave, sorry. But no, no, those, we're definitely very illuminating, gave us a peek into the school.
Well, not only that, but we were more engaging principals than we are now.
That's, that again is why I asked it, but that's something you guys found value or they found value. And it gives them a chance to kind of showcase their schools well and what they're doing, what they're working on. I love that idea.
Just one thing I thought of that I want to call out, just to be clear, Ford here references Ford Rolfsrud, for any viewers at home who may be confused.
Oh.
Not external consultant, this is not an advisor, this is an actual employee. What is his formal plow title?
He is our data and testing supervisor, or?
I see a nod in the background.
You don't know?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good stuff.
Just give him to change his name, that'd be all I need.
But you know what, I will say this, when you are working with Ford Rolfsrud, our data and testing supervisor, whenever we read Ford on something, he thinks it's about him. It can someone else confusing for him as well.
His parents didn't know it, they were cousins.
All right, any final questions or comments for Dave? Thanks, Dave, thanks.
Thanks a lot.
The work that the team's putting in place.
This is really important.
Good stuff. All right, let's move on to item 8.3. Now, I don't see Ashley, this is an update on the survey, so I'm going to turn to you, Mike.
Yeah, I'll just give a brief update. The survey data was collected, we'll have those numbers, I think Ashley had that, the number that were cell phone, landline, and then some somewhere online. I think they collected, it was over 420 responses, I know the target was 400, but we'll get that, and we'll have that on August 12th, the specific breakdown. They are, Dave Baker-Tilly who did the survey work for us, they have taken and manipulated all the direct responses, and now they're working on the indirect or the kind of open-ended questions. Kelly Smith from Baker-Tilly will be at our work session on August 12th to do a presentation of the survey data to the board. And that'll be the first presentation of that. And then Ashley and I and our team, we're working then on the timeline for presenting that data to the public through a series of focus groups. And we'll have that information on August 12th as well. But things seem to be coming along very well. I've seen some preliminary, kind of how they're sorting the data, what they're doing with it and how it looks. And it'll be very informative and it'll be a good presentation, I think, on August 12th, so.
And Mike, is that the Kelly Smith who was the superintendent in Belle Plaine for a number of years?
That is he.
So we're not just getting a pollster, we're getting somebody who's sat in Mike's seat before.
No education. It's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any questions for him on the survey? All right, let's move on to action, or, well, action category, it's item 9.1, and that is the second reading of several district policies. Kristi, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, the, I hope everyone's had a chance to review the policies. 602, which is the organization of school calendar and school day, 603, the curriculum development, 606, textbooks and instructional materials, 608, instructional services, special education, 611, homeschooling, 615, testing combinations, modifications and exemptions for IEPs, section 504 plans and LEP students, 616, which is school district system accountability, and 624, online learning options. I believe when we presented the first reading a few weeks ago, we explained there wasn't really a whole lot of changes to the policies, it was basically just bringing them up to speed and match statute changes, MSBA, some of their suggestions, and just to bring the policies current. Some of them were a little behind, even though we were actually executing them properly, the policy just hadn't formally been updated. So that in a nutshell is what happened with those policies. And everyone should have had a copy in there.
Questions on the second reading? I have one, Kristi, and it's more of a procedural thing, I almost feel like I should address it to Sarah, she might know if she thinks about it. There's several of these in here, several, I can see two, there might be more. They don't have any redlining, were there no changes whatsoever? 603, 606 is an example.
I believe that they were very wholesale changes, where there was a great amount of change, so you're going from old to new.
Okay, so then they're, they could be, rather, is the wrong word, very different.
Yes.
Okay, well, again, my preference always is to see something so I can see what's being changed, as opposed to trying to read everything. And so my request continues to be to see something in that format. It's easier, I think, to review, and I know it can be cumbersome as well, but it's just, you know, speaking for myself, I always find that helpful to see what was changed.
Yeah, I was just going to talk a little bit about policy committee and kind of procedural things. And this, this batch of policies is a good example of that. And we met just, you know, earlier this evening. But part of the process, you'll notice these tend to, you know, this group of 600s tends to apply to teaching and learning and the buildings. And so along the way, that first group, teaching and learning staff, we sent them, you know, they vetted those, Ford Rolfsrud, and did a lot of work in that area with Nancy Tool and others in the department, who then in turn worked with building principals and other folks and, you know, gave input and feedback along the way. And that's, we're trying to capture that. We, Sarah did a very nice job of setting up our policy work over the next few months. And so even leaving tonight's meeting, you know, Dave and I, our homework assignment out of that committee is, are these need to go where in our organization to kind of vet, see if they match, you know, how they've been implemented, what we're doing, any concerns. And so I appreciate the work of teaching and learning in this process.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the 600 series was the last series we had not gotten to. All the others, one to nine, we had. And then, of course, we still have to keep up.
There's still time to do.
But the 600, the reason probably why they were to check it is because that's the last group we were to get to.
Correct, exactly.
Kudos to you guys on the policy committee for your work on doing this. Sarah, always, always thank you for keeping us straight. Any other questions on any individual policies or then in general before we seek to accept these? All right, I'm looking for a motion to accept as presented the policies as listed in your motion. Paul?
I'll second.
Second. Judy, any final discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item 9.2. This is an annual event or part of an annual event, long-term facilities maintenance. And I think in Jeff's absence, you're going to handle this, do you mind?
And Sarah's posting the document on the board, it's in the board agenda. This is an annual event where we have to approve the 10-year LTFM, Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan. I'll just maybe highlight, you know, the second paragraph there. The 10-year expenditure plan presents prioritization of deferred maintenance projects. The funding for 2021 is similar to the previous year, estimated to be about $2.3 million used for this type of maintenance. This year, significant expenditures would be roof replacement at Sweeney, elevator upgrade at East Middle School. And then the last paragraph just talks about timing and implementation of prioritized projects. Will be subject to an analysis of various LTFM funding mechanisms and maximize available revenue with minimal increases to the district property tax levy. So, and I believe we are now fully, you know, the long-term facilities maintenance was kind of phased in over time in terms of the tax impact. It is now fully, what do you call it, fully implemented. So, yeah. But I'd be happy to try and answer questions, but this is more, you know, it's a formality in order to be eligible to receive the revenue to be used to maintain, maintain our facilities. And so we have the formal resolution there, which is what the Department of Education asked, asked the school board to consider approving, so.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? This again is what we're, just so everyone's clear, we're actually looking out for the year because we're already in 1921. So this is 2021. So this is the annual event, pretty standard, 2.3 is roughly what we've been spending because that's, it's all formulaic in terms of how much you can generate. And there are the master plans, you know, we do it annually, we can only make changes. Any questions? Okay. Sarah, did we have to take a roll call on this? I don't think we did.
Just so you know, the motion makers.
Yeah, but the fact that they actually stipulated that may be quite.
I would curve.
You know what, let's just do it. We've got our bases covered.
No, we know it's taken care of.
Yeah, so we're acting on the resolution to approve the District 720 Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-year plan, of which the 2021 part is the key that we're looking at in the document. So Sarah, why don't you go ahead and call them?
Aldrich?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McKean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Tomcik?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Empowerman?
Yes, motion passes. Should have got it in jail. Thank you, Mike. All right, I guess tonight is going to be quick. Let's quickly go around the room.
Rex, I've got a committee report.
Yeah.
Of Mike's review. So it's a little bit meatier, if we could kind of knock the committee reports out first.
That's fine.
Okay. So the personnel committee met tonight, over the last few months, Director Gray, Keith in the back of the room, has been facilitating the collection of feedback from cabinet principals and board members. And I have to give the big caveat that this is the first year, it was a half-year full-time and some more part-time before that. So the feedback has been strong, especially in the areas of credibility, customer service, financial management, right, which are some very big things, right? You know, we talked quite a bit, and our developmental feedback would be more, not necessarily change in behavior, but a continued to implement systems and processes of accountability, as well as continue to get to know people, be visible. And it's, you know, what do we have, 1,400 key employees and 8,400 students? So, you know, it's okay you haven't met them all by now, but by like October 15th.
She can.
But, I mean, it's, it's very much continue doing what you're doing. It's been a great start and let's continue to build on it. I don't know, committee members first, and then we can open it up to other feedback.
You said it all very well, and I'll just say thank you for your hard work so far.
Keep it up. Then, any other board comments?
I, I think you're doing a great job. I've heard nothing but positive comments. And I've appreciated everything that you have brought to our district. And, you know, a short time on the board, I've learned a lot as well, so, from your knowledge. It's greatly appreciated. Keep up the great work.
I would say especially in the area of community, the community out there really seems to have connected with you. A lot of them are really pleased with the work that you're doing. And if there's anything we need in this community, it's understanding and appreciation of school.
I love the coffee with the superintendent. I'd like to get there someday, if that's early. Plus I'd have to smell coffee, so that would take that off. But just, just the.
I'll meet you some morning for a nice water.
That would work.
He recommends those.
But anyways, just being out there to the community that they can go and meet with you one-on-one or in a group where you're not hiding away from everybody is great and is appreciated.
If I may add, I think it's very generous of you to let people walk to your office.
So I have the pleasure of working with Mike, perhaps a little closer than the other folks on the board as the chair, and it's been a distinct pleasure to work with you side by side and have found that I've learned, we all learn from everyone we interact with, but I have learned great things from you in the time we've worked together. And that's a testament to your knowledge and experience in the law. I think you've fully immersed yourself in the community and in our district. And as was said at the university, keep it up. It's great. And I want to thank Keith and the committee, but Keith and for all the process of putting it together, collecting the feedback and collating it, we shared that, so we had the opportunity to see it. And it was quite positive. So we appreciate that.
One particular positive feedback that I wanted to share, and of course, my brain went dead when I was supposed to be sharing it, around the credibility piece. I mean, one aspect, the way you tackled the ICS thing, right, I mean, that was an area where it would just be easy, easy to say, I looked into it and we're good. No, you pushed pause on a critical vendor relationship, brought the right people in, had the right process. You were incredibly transparent, to the degree, you know, sunlight's the best disinfectant. You did a great job of saying this could lead to people questioning our integrity, and you took the bull by the horns. So that was, I think, I think I saw that a few times in the feedback, as an area of specific exempt, exception, exception for.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm, you know, my wife and I, Carol, we're thrilled to be in Shakopee. We've moved into a house now that we own and.
You moved here twice already.
Yeah, I've moved twice in the last eight months. But I've learned a ton from the people around this table and in the audience and in our community. And certainly, one of the things that I hope to do a good job of modeling is the idea that all of us can learn and get better and improve. And I've always been wired that way. And so, very, very appreciative of the feedback and especially the comments and the feedback, because those are actionable things. And I know I'll never be perfect, but, you know, I'll give it my best, day in and day out, and absolutely love what I'm doing and where I'm doing it. So, thank you.
Excellent. All right.
Now, where are the fish biting on the?
Didn't seem to be anywhere near our place, so, I don't know. There were a lot of people out yesterday.
All right, let's go back to 10, and if you have any other committee reports, you can embed those. And I'll start with Judy and go around this way.
The, let's see, the Wednesday after we had our board retreat, there was an The, let's see, the Wednesday after we had our board retreat, there was an Academy's retreat at the high school, it was all day, it was excellent, that was really well planned. There's so much I could talk about, the support of the community, which is just key to this whole thing working, it is so solid, it just made me feel proud to be part of Shakopee, it was a really good feeling. But the very best part, and I bet Mike would agree with this too, who was there, the students. The student panel that was there just lauded what is going on, talked about how we know we have support for whatever we want to do, anyone who's struggling, there are people there to help them, it was just very reaffirming about what's going on at the high school, and I was very proud of our teachers and proud of all the people that made it happen.
That's cool, very much. Joe?
Since we did not have a finance committee meeting tonight, I don't have any.
Okay.
So we had a policy meeting tonight, working on bringing some more policies to the board at the August 12th meeting. Again, not, not necessarily a lot of changes to those policies, which is minor things that are, some of them are legislative-driven from the session, and we will be scheduling another school board communication meeting coming up in the near future, now that we know that we're going to have survey results, I think that our committee would like to be involved in, in making sure that that information is disseminated properly and how we can help with, with that.
Excellent. Dave?
I have nothing else.
Kate? Councilwoman?
Just wanted to let you guys know that we're sold in the area for the Shakopee Diversity Alliance, and they're putting on this awesome, what I think is their seventh annual international festival, happening Friday, August 2nd, from 5:00 to 9:00. We have a great lineup, there's tons of them, some I can't even say, but their names are, we have Irish dancers and Indian dancers, Filipino dancers, Russian, we've never had Russian that I know of, oh, we might have, but I'm just excited, so I just wanted to let you guys know of this event.
No, by that, did you mean Native Americans?
No, actually, the, the, no, they are belly dancers, so, no, they are. We've tried, we have really tried to get native dancers, unfortunately, the prices are pretty high, and you can't find.
Palau is a great opportunity to go observe that.
Right.
And it's free now.
Right, but to get them to come to our, it's a little spitty, so we're not quite there yet.
So again, for the benefit of everybody watching, the date is Friday, August 2nd?
Correct, from 5:00 to 9:00.
5:00 to 9:00, and is it?
At Huber Market.
Huber, right, okay, thank you, appreciate it. Sarah?
I'm good.
Paul?
This really isn't school board related, but for any of you who have not had a chance to observe our head football coach, Ray Betten, tonight and tomorrow night would be a great opportunity to do that, to see how he, he works with these young people and helps transform them into being outstanding adults. I mean, one loss record the past few years hasn't really reflected success, but if you look at how he coaches these young people, it, it just, it's phenomenal. He, you know, holds them to account and really encourages them to do well in the classroom, and it's, I can't say enough about the man.
Good, appreciate that.
I had the opportunity, my family, to go see Shrek this weekend at the high school. It was hilarious and well-done, and if you look closely, there is a former board member in the cast.
Oh.
In a fairly prominent role, so it's well-done, and I just, it was my first RVTC production, so I was very impressed.
Nice, very nice. Angel?
I got it.
Feel like I've spoken enough this. Nothing else?
Nor do I, just thank you for doing your jobs, day in, day out, to everyone. All right, let's do recognition of visitors to the meeting, we need to extend that, since it's on the agenda, I don't think we have anybody here, unless one of you two would like to say something else, all right?
Dave might get up and sign him.
Okay, so upcoming meetings, we had several committee meetings that we talked about, our next meeting is the, can't cross the.
August 12th.
Thank you, August 12th, and again, a series of committees, including the, the facilities task force. Gosh, it's hard to believe it's coming back to school here. All right, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. And Kristi, I'll do Paul for a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.